I'd like to call the City Council Regular Meeting of Monday, November 24th. The order, roll call please.
Alderman Anderson.
Here.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Here.
Alderman Dolick.
Here.
And then Alderman Cameron and Dash are absent with prior notice.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge. Okay, the clerk is not here, so I'd like to give a motion to appoint Lloyd Austin as the deputy clerk during this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You are the deputy clerk. Thank you. Item three, approval of minutes, is a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, Anderson.
We have a motion and a second, any questions? Roll call please.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Motion passes. We have no presentations, appointments or confirmations or proclamations. Do we have any public comments on agenda matters?
Not on agenda, no.
Okay. Item seven, consent agenda.
All items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a City Council member so requests, in which the event, the item will be removed from the general order of the business, general order of business, and considered as a separate agenda item. We have three items tonight. Item A, O-2525, Staff Memo and Ordinance Approving Sale, Donation and Destruction of Surplus Vehicles, this is a second reading. Item B, O-2526, Staff Memo and Ordinance Approving Sale, Donation and Destruction of Surplus Equipment, this is a second reading. And item C, O-2527, Staff Memo and Ordinance Amending the City Code Title I, Chapter 7, Sections 12, Health Inspector, Section 17, Code Enforcement Officer, Section 18, Plumbing Official, Assistant Plumbing Official, and Section 19, Electrical Inspector, as well as the Assistant Electrical Inspector of City Code, and this is a second reading as well.
So do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. These are all just second readings. Roll call please.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item eight, we have no old business tonight. Item nine, new business, we have a lot of items here that'll be read at least partially, so bear with us as we get through these.
Yes, I'll read through A through G altogether first, as they are all relating to tax levies. So we have O-2528, tax levy for the police pension fund, this is a first reading. Item B, O-2529, tax levy for special service area one, this is a first reading. Item C, O-2530, tax levy for special service area two, a first reading. Item D, O-2531, tax levy for special service area number three, this is a first reading as well. Item E, O-2532, tax levy for special service area number four, a first reading. Item F, O-2533, tax levy for special service area five, this is a first reading. And item G, O-2534, tax levy for special service area eight, and like I said, all of those are a first reading.
So these will all come back at our December 8th meeting for the second reading and final approval. If you have any questions, if the council has any questions, please reach out to Peter. Same thing with public, if you have questions about these levies, please call Peter and he'll let you know more. So we'll continue on.
Item H, O-2535, Staff Memo and Ordinance Amending Chapter 1, Title 7, Section 4, Deputy Clerk Responsibilities, this is a first reading.
So first reading, it will come back also on December 8th for final approval. This is mostly just a housekeeping issue, correct Peter?
Yeah.
Please continue.
Item I, R-2576, Staff Memo and Resolution Approving Amendment to the Employee Personnel Manual of the City of Prospect Heights.
Is a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Peter, I mean, is this anything you want to?
This is a change to the city code for employee vacation accrual. This isn't a tremendous issue, but we want to make sure that our employees take the time to spend with their family and friends and decompress. As you can imagine, this can be a stressful job, so we want to make sure that our employees are utilizing their vacation time for their mental health, primarily in the years that, or the year that they're accruing it. We have a very liberal policy as far as the amount of hours that employees are able to carry over from year to year. This is just an incentive that they use those hours, or if they do go over, there's a penalty where they would only get 50% of the benefit.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
We have a motion and a second.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alright, we have item-
We forgot.
Motion passes.
We got two more votes?
Two missing. Motion passes.
Alright, item J, R-2577, Staff Memo and Resolution Relating to the Semi-Annual Review of Closed Session Minutes for the City of Prospect Heights.
We need a motion to approve?
So moved, Morgan Adams.
Second, Anderson.
We have a motion and a second. Peter, could you just-
Sure, absolutely. This is, this resolution is a biannual resolution that the city is, we're not required to do it every six months, but we're required to do it periodically. Our closed session minutes, as everyone knows, is generally confidential information that's voted on in closed session, but as time goes by, it's possible that the issues that were confidential back in the day may not have the same confidentiality now. So the city is required to go through these closed session minutes to see if that confidentiality still applies or not. Staff went through and did it, did our review of it, our legal department, Tressler, went through, did their review of it. Confidentiality in both staff and legal's opinion is that it maintains, and nothing should be released at this point, so that is a recommendation to the council. So what's being passed before the council right now is everything stays exactly the same as it was before, nothing new is being released.
So with that, we have a motion and a second, any questions? Roll call please.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item K, R-2578, Staff Memo and Resolution Approving the Bid Results and A warding the Contract to Signs III Inc. for the Construction of Electronic Sign at the City's Police Department with a bid of $43,500.
Is a motion to approve?
So moved, Anderson.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Chief, would you like to tell us about it?
Yes, sir. We are looking to put a monument sign in front of the police department with an LED LCD message board, which will allow us to display certain public information, advertisement of events that the police department is involved in, traffic and safety campaigns, and any other information that we feel the public needs to know, something that we have not been able to thus far. We've been utilizing vinyl signs, advertising our outreach programs, various field trips, various campaigns, and police involvement. This sign will allow us to do that electronically in a much more professional manner.
Thank you. Any questions?
If I may add as well, this was part of the budget, it was budgeted at $50,000, so it did come in under budget. And the fire district is removing their sign, so this will kind of take over for that sign as well.
Nice.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a first and a second. Roll call please.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Item L, Approval of the 2026 City Council Regular Meeting Calendar.
Need a motion to approve?
So moved, Morgan Adams.
Second, Anderson.
We have a motion and a second, are there any questions or comments on the dates?
No.
All good. We can do this with a voice vote, so all those in favor of approving?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes.
Alright, we have item 10, Staff Elected Officials and Commissioner Reports, the October Financial Report by Assistant Finance Director Bob Tino.
Thanks, Mayor and City Council Members. I'd like to present the financial report for October 31st, 2025. At 50% of the fiscal year has passed, most city funds are performing or above expectations with revenues generally tracking ahead of budget, and expenditures are remaining controlled by the department heads. Some things regarding revenues, the property tax, we just know that the bill just came out in last week for the second half of the property tax, we'll hopefully start seeing some of that property tax revenue in the coming months, mostly probably January, February for those. Some highlights for key revenue highlights, we have sales tax, video gaming tax, and investment income at our roughly 60% of annual budget. The tourism fund is seeing over 70% of a budget on the revenue side, and interest income again remains strong, being over 66% of the budget. Item regarding the revenue to the city, we're also monitoring the collections and the delinquency of some of the past due for sewer accounts. Like I reported last month, we sent out about 134 sewer letters, there were people who were behind in their sewer payments. As of today, as of Friday, about 69 residents have responded and paid their sewer bills, collecting over $17,000 worth of revenue. We still have about 65 residents who have not responded, with a little over $18,000 still outstanding. Of those 65 that outstanding, we have 18 residents under about $200, we have 27 residents under $300, and 20 residents under $500. That breaks down the 65 that had not responded. We are still pursuing, we make phone calls, we send out letters, we're still actively trying to recapture some of that outstanding balances. The vehicle sticker, the vehicle sticker program that we just started last, back in September, we issued about 3,200 letters, mailings, that show that people had registered plates to the City of Elmer's. Of that, approximately 1,500 of those letters, people responded, they either bought a sticker, updated their information, or they reported they had moved out of the city, so we've been able to fix those. What was left over is about 1,700 residents that did not respond, or 1,700 letters that no one responded on that. We did send out a second notice with adjudication dates to come into the adjudication part of it, where they can come in and plead their case why they didn't buy a sticker. 539 residents responded by either purchasing the sticker, updating their information, or confirming they moved or stole their vehicle. So the collections activity to date, we approximately collected $104,000. Of that, about 70,000 of it has been because of late fees, because they went in too long to purchase their stickers, so there's late fees involved in that. We sold them new, 500 new vehicle stickers in this process, so we have 500 new people in our database for that. The next round of adjudications on December 3rd and December 17th, which has about 1,000 unresolved second notices for those. As we went through this campaign, we started, the ongoing issue is identified that most residents, when they sell their vehicle, they're not destroying their plates with the Illinois Secretary of State's or having them removed from their database, so they're still showing up as a registered plate to the City of Elmer's. So if you sell your vehicle, you need to contact the Secretary of State to let them know those plates are no longer, are no longer good, this way it won't show up on the database and you won't receive a letter for next time. Another one is that they're not contacting the city if they change plates on their vehicles. So they'll have a new plate in the database, but we have an old plate in our system when they first registered a car with us. So you have to let us know, and we just transfer the plate over, it's real simple to do that with the current sticker. And then also, if you move, most people are forgetting to change their address and they still have a Prospect Heights address in the database and not the new address on that. So if you move, you just got to change your plates to the new address, and you should not receive a letter for that. So we're still working through that, and hopefully people will understand once they see what we're doing and telling them that they will take care of everything on that. Regarding the Places for Eating and Hotel Tax Update, right now we have a total of 42 businesses that remit Places for Eating Tax. As of Friday, there's been 16 businesses that have submitted their current payment. This is likely because of the mail timing, getting the mail in since Friday was the 21st. You have to have your remittance in by the 20th each month, but we know what the mail sometimes is slow, so hopefully we'll see some, we'll see these 16 businesses have their money in by this time this week, or by this week sometime. There's only one business that is delinquent for both September, October, a demand letter has been sent for September payment, and a follow-up phone call we made this week to see where they're at on that. On the hotel tax side, there are nine businesses that remit hotel tax of these, four businesses have not made their October payment, and again, it's probably the delay because of the mail and the timing of it. So we continue to monitor both the tax categories closely, and we take action as needed, in most cases, payments received after a minor letter or a follow-up phone call. That's all I have for the financial report and the delinquency on the revenue side. Is there any questions I can answer?
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to our left here, with staff, Lloyd, anything?
No report.
No report?
No.
Peter?
I'm-
You want to go last?
Mark, go ahead.
Mark?
Thank you, sir. I'm going to guess it's all about tree lighting. Saturday, the 29th, 5 o'clock at Gary Maravas Center of the Prospect Heights Park District, the city hosts the annual tree lighting event, starts at 5:00. Get there a little early, because I like to be punctual. It's a great time, every year it's a real success, it's a lot of fun, the kids, the garden club brings out sweets, the lions club brings out hot chocolate, Santa happens to show up, we have a countdown, we light the tree, all in all, planned for like 45 minutes, it's not going to be an all-nighter, it's a great time, so that's coming up, I'm excited about it. Along with that, comes a few other quick reports, Mr. Mayor. Project status, a lot of you may have seen, we did some road patching in the last couple weeks, we had some areas in town that the roads were in such poor shape, we couldn't make it through the winter, about a dozen or 14 spots got hot patched. Our crew does the smaller cold patching of little potholes and things that pop up. If you have one in your block or your neighborhood, give us a call, we try to get to those as quick as we can. Construction, Long River Road by Milwaukee Avenue there, we have the Levy 37 wall being replaced right now. This is the accident that happened a couple years ago, it took us quite a while to get all the resources, the contracts, and everyone lined up on the same page for us to get this project fixed. The plan with the weather is to get it done and cleaned up at this point, they want to get done before winter really comes into play. Demolition is happening right now, they're making very good progress, so we're all hoping that even if we're going to get a little snow and ice this weekend, it warms back up and they're going to keep moving, so that's a good thing going on. Levy 37 always comes up about the missing sluice gate and the problems that we've been having. The good news is, the project got redesigned, as we talked about in the past, the bids went out, they came back, they're very favorable with the pricing that came in. IDNR, Illinois Department of Natural Resources, is managing that program, they're in their review process right now. I'm hoping that with their review, contracts renegotiated, and a schedule for our January council meeting, we have some planned dates on when they're going to start. There's a lot of factors in the run, but we'll have a great update, I assume, at that point. A lot of you see the project going on in Wolf Road, we've talked about that, MWRD is doing a big sewer rehabilitation project, they have a lot left. I have a meeting with them next week to talk about their status and what their winter expectations are, and when they're going to finally stop, because it's going to be too cold to work, so more on that. And obviously, winter is coming up, our Public Works Crew plows all the city-owned roadways. Most everything that's 25 miles an hour in town, we plow. County and state plow the bigger stuff. Keep in mind, we haven't had, we haven't, haven't had to drive in snow for a while, take your time, and if it does happen to snow on garbage night or garbage morning, please be cognizant of where you put your garbage cans. Our guys do their best to avoid them, but they want to clean the street, they don't want to knock cans over, and with six guys doing the entire city, some garbage cans do get knocked over and we don't want to, so try to put them in the right spot, and be safe, be careful, it's, we're getting in the net season. That's it, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Chief?
Yes, sir, real quick, I just want to update everyone that we are still working on police department, City of Prospect Heights Police Department, staffing shortages, we recently had a part-time police officer transition to a full-time position, which has helped us out. We have two in the academy, and we still have three openings, and we are actively working on that. Lastly, I'd like to highlight our Thanksgiving food drive. We've done this Thanksgiving food drive for many years now, and on average, we provide meals for approximately 50 to 60 families. This year, we had to call an audible and change it slightly, but nonetheless, it was still a successful food drive. We, we want to thank the, thank the community for their generosity, which we raised over $3,000 to support local families. Residents and shoppers at Tony's Fresh Market contributed more than $640 worth of food, all of which was delivered to the new food pantry at our Redeemer Lutheran Church located here in Prospect Heights. We're also grateful to Gene's Village Towing for their generous donation of $1,000, and Tony's Fresh Market who donated $2,500 in gift cards for, for the families that registered with us. With these combined donations, I, I want to sincerely thank Director Rochelle Gentry and Records Clerk Lisa Biancolana, who came together and they put individual baskets for all of the families that registered for our food drive, along with $50 gift cards for the families to be able to support their holiday meals and, and ongoing needs. So in total, more than 21 families received full food baskets of select items picked out by Gentry and Biancolana, and families who registered after November 21st deadline were given gift cards to ensure that they can purchase what is needed. As it was such a successful food drive, we will have funds left over, and we will provide that to families for Christmas as well, that expressed the need for, for that holiday as well. So all in all, despite some of the challenges, our community really showed up, and I want to thank everyone who donated, partnered with us, and helped make this year's food drive a meaningful one, and especially those two ladies from our police department who really put forth the effort in making this a memorable one.
Thank you. Is there, is there anything else you're doing at Christmas time? Is there?
Yes, I can highlight it now if you want.
Yeah.
Our, for, once again, for, for many years, the fire district and the police department have partnered up to do a gift giving program during, during Christmas season. However, this year, we took a different approach, our social worker, Rosangela Maldonado, came up with a program of an anonymous gift giving program, to where donors can register with the police department and elect to support a number of children and, and buy gifts for them. And so this program has yielded presents for 84, approximately 80 children will receive presents during this Christmas season, in which the donors have to go and shop the gifts themselves, package and wrap the gifts, deliver them to the police department, and the families would then schedule an appointment to come in and pick up the gifts for their children. Once, once again, a very, very incredible program that she came up with in partnership with the fire district, specially retired Deputy Chief Tim Jones, another program that's really going to give back to the community this holiday season.
It's a neat program, because you have just the first name of the participant, how old they are, and then a list of like three things that they're, it's just-
Their, their desired gifts, yes.
Right. And some of them are, you know, very basic, but it's just, they don't have what they need or what they want, some of them are needs more than-
Yeah. Anonymity was key for Rosangela and this program, to not, not to put on a show and take pictures, but rather, the families come into the police department on their own time, collect the gifts without anybody knowing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll start on my right, oh, I'm sorry, Peter, you're-
Oh, sure. If I may, I just want to give the audience and our audience on TV a heads up that an informational flyer is being sent out by the city, you should be receiving it in your mailboxes this week, hopefully. It is, it describes, it's in reference to the city's proposed 2027 to 2030 road program. For some of you may remember, approximately 15 years ago, in 2010, the city took out, or asked for a referendum for road bonds in order to fix the roads, well, fortunately it's 15 years later, and our roads didn't get any better. So the city is going to be proposing, possibly, depending on the output or the response from our, our residents, another referendum. As our road bond from 2010 expires at the end of 2026, the new proposed road bond would start up January 1st of 2027. So this is what's called a wraparound referendum. Our whole purpose for this is, then I come up with a catchphrase that's easy to remember, new roads, same tax rate, because what we're, what we're doing is we're making, going to have it so that what you're paying now would be the same that you would be paying if the current road bond continued. So in essence, I don't want to say it's not a tax increase, because we can't say that because property taxes or EAVs go up and down, but this would be the same as a continuation of the current road bond that's going through. This would be targeted at 65% of our streets, and again, this is something that the city just cannot do without a road bond. This is, just like it was 15 years ago when we did this, the city has no other mechanism funding-wise in order to do this amount of infrastructure repair for the city. So please be on the lookout for the information that's going to be hitting your mailboxes. We do request that you, as residents, give us your feedback. There is a survey that you'll have access to, that'll be either through the mailer that you, that you received, there's a QR code on it, we're also seeing if we can put that on our website so that you have access to it. We want your feedback. Also on there is the referendum question, so that you can look at that. The city cannot be in favor of or against a referendum, we have to be neutral, all we can do is tell you factual information, and that's what this informational newsletter does. If a road, if a road bond is passed, this is what's going to be done with the money. So if you have any questions, you can always contact City Hall, we'll be more happy to answer any questions, but the newsletter is very informational of all the facts that you need to come up with a, a decision on your own as a resident. Thank you.
Thank you. Elected officials on my right, any report?
Just wanted to wish everyone a safe and happy Thanksgiving, that's all.
And same thing, I would like to wish all of our residents and their families a very happy, healthy, and peaceful Thanksgiving this year.
Kudos to you, happy Thanksgiving to everyone, I have no other report.
Yep, same thing, and if you can find it in your heart to, contact the police station and, and I'm sure the list is endless as far as the number of people that we could help with that Christmas gift, gift purchase program, it's, it's very easy and it, it goes a long way, so if you, if you can, give the police department a call and they'll, they'll set you up. Okay. Item 11, Approval of Warrants.
We have the approval expenditures tonight, we have a total amount of $317,254.33 for wire payments, so we have an 1114 2025 payroll for the amount of $20914.05. We have an October IMRF payment in the amount of $26,750.21. A second quarter police pension wire payment of $272,132.50. And we have a manual check for the law offices of John Fiati, October adjudication attorney- And we have a manual check for the law offices of John Fiatey, October adjudication attorney, for $600, bringing the total warrant amount tonight to $817,651.09.
Okay. We need a motion to approve?
Some move. Morgan Adams?
Second, Anderson.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dola?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 12, public comment on non-agenda matters, five-minute time limit. Do we have any?
Yes, we have a few slips tonight. We'll start with Miriam Shoeva, speaking on ICE activity.
My name is Miriam, and I'm a resident of Mount Prospect and a member of Hana Center's Suburban Youth Council. Today, I'm here as a senior at Prospect High School and the child of Tajik immigrants. I'm here today to advocate for the restriction of ICE activity on city property. ICE activity has been steadily increasing in the suburbs, and even if someone isn't a direct target of ICE, this is an issue that impacts the whole community. I was personally affected when ICE was recently spotted multiple times at Pollock Plaza, which is where Hana Center is located. I was at home when one of my fellow suburban youth council members texted our group chat and grouped me with a screenshot stating that ICE was seen there. I was surprised, because I hadn't realized until that moment how much ICE activity had increased in the suburbs. Knowing that ICE was present at a location I frequented was frightening, even as a citizen. It's especially concerning, since Hana Center is a place where immigrants can seek help and are advocated for, but when ICE agents are lurking there, it diminishes the safe and supportive environment created at Hana. When people start living in fear, when families are afraid to go to public spaces, and when children watch their family members disappear, it becomes a community crisis, not just an immigration issue. As someone with an immigrant background, I've seen firsthand how harmful this is. The people that are being detained are not any different from us, and there isn't anything that should make us think of them as less than us. It is morally wrong to allow families who have peacefully lived here for decades to be torn apart. Since the start of Operation Midway Blitz, there have been too many instances of ICE officers violently detaining people for us to ignore their actions. As a nation built by immigrants, this contradicts our history and roots, and it goes against our country's core principles of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Even though the moral concern should be enough, there are also legal issues that come with ICE's activity. They've done countless warrantless arrests, they unlawfully detain legal citizens and residents, and they use excessive force on people. These actions consistently violate constitutional rights, and yet they continue to occur. At Prospect High School, I've taken multiple law courses, because I'm interested in pursuing law. But now, as I've been witnessing ICE constantly operating illegally, I've started to question my decision. How can I knowingly be part of a legal system that is unjust? How can I be a bystander to ICE's activity when it goes against my and our country's values? As a young person growing up in this community, I've seen the effects of ICE on my peers. ICE's presence has instilled so much fear that people my age post on their social media to warn each other about reported ICE activity. Students of color have started to post Instagram stories of various locations throughout the suburbs where ICE has been seen, with many having captions such as, "Guys, be careful, ICE was spotted here." If people are taking to social media to keep each other safe, then it should be obvious that we've lost faith in our leaders. Every single person is affected, and therefore, every single person needs to contribute to keep our community safe and united. So, I'm asking the council to take real steps to protect our community. We call on you, the Prospect Heights City Council, to pass a resolution restricting ICE from operating on city property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Seth Marcus.
Thank you for having us here today. I just want to say something very, very brief, which is that I think there's going to be a number of people speaking on this issue about ICE not on city property, and I just want to mention that it's not reinventing the wheel, so I just want to read from off my phone here, that Chicago has passed an executive order that, that city-owned property, including schools, public parks, and libraries cannot be used for ICE activity. It's also, and the town of Evanston has passed a resolution, Oak Park, Wilmette, Carpentersville, Elgin, and just recently, our local sister city, Arlington Heights. So, I just want to mention, we're not asking you to reinvent the wheel, we're just asking you to do what lots of other municipalities in our area have done, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we have Benjamin Marcus.
Hi, thanks for your time. I was born and raised in Prospect Heights. I learned my values here. I grew up to be a civil rights attorney, and I'm here speaking today also in favor of a resolution that would ban the use of municipal property for ICE activity. It's the right thing to do morally, but also, whatever you think about ICE's activities, it's also important for Prospect Heights and its government to be seen as a trusted, safe place for all of the residents of Prospect Heights to gather, for people to trust this government, that it's working on their behalf. And whatever the federal government is doing, I think it's important for this municipality to stand up for its residents, or at least to be seen as a place where everyone can come and conduct their activities with the government. So, I'm strongly in favor of a resolution that would prohibit the use of municipal property for ICE activity. Thanks.
Next up, we have Dana Severson.
Mayor, and Alderman, and City Council, thank you. I'd like to say that I'm here tonight as a private citizen, and I would like to ask you to please approve a resolution that prohibits ICE from using city properties as staging grounds for the cruel and illegal roundup of refugees and non-citizens. These masked and nameless raids are being conducted without search warrants, due process, and are a very real threat to our democracy. Targets are often chosen based on skin color or language. People have been tear gassed, threatened at gunpoint, beat up, shot with rubber bullets, pepper sprayed, and violently manhandled. The official party line is that they are only going after criminals here illegally. In reality, 93% of those arrested have no criminal records. Yet, they are here, yes, they're here illegally, most are waiting the years-long immigration process to play out. There are often residents of 10, 20, or 30 years, have families that were born and raised in the US, and they are US citizens. Their tactics are meant to instill fear and result in numerous injuries, and in a few cases, death. Those captured have been detained or shipped to locations unknown, and their families have been torn apart. These actions have been condemned by residents, civic and elected leaders, religious leaders, and most people with a common sense of decency. The Pope has strongly backed the US Catholic bishops' condemnation of the raids and tactics, and called for an end in the dehumanizing rhetoric and violence, suggesting that the US justice system has a better way to handle the issues. As mentioned earlier, the city is of Aurora, Bautavia, Berwind, Broadview, Carpenterville, Chicago, Cook County, Elgin, Evanston, Lake County, North Chicago, Oak Park, Skokie, Wheeling, and Wilmette have all instituted bans or restrictions on public properties. I'm asking you, please, as a resident of Prospect Heights, to put us on the right side of this equation and create a, a ban that will prevent ICE from using our beloved Prospect Heights as a serving, as a staging ground. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Andrew De La Salas.
My name is Andrew De La Salas, and I serve as a youth program coordinator at the Hana Center. I'm here today to encourage the council to pass a resolution restricting ICE operations on city property. As you may know, the organization is based in Prospect Heights and offers a range of services in English, Korean, and Spanish to 16,000 individuals annually, and it is because of this commitment that brought me to work in Prospect Heights and encourages me to bring my best self every week. Because of our team, people have been able to keep the lights on, food on the table, and a roof over their heads. But our work doesn't stop at services. As a youth program coordinator, I work with students through the Suburban Youth Council, one member who you've heard tonight, which unites immigrant students from across the northwest suburbs and trains them to bring about a world that we're all invested in, one that is more just, fair, and healthy. These high schoolers have been instrumental in the passage of the TEACH Act and created in-language materials to make sure our communities are informed at the ballot box. Their advocacy is deeply rooted in their lived experiences. Currently, they're investigating the stigmatization of cultural food by collecting and distributing survey data to decision-makers in their school districts. This campaign will undoubtedly provide them with skills to succeed in the workplace, but also reflects an important lesson. When immigrant students feel protected, our communities thrive. This is also true in the inverse. Our students don't feel safe. Our community is under threat. Decortations have become so normalized that teenagers discuss the details over Snapchat and Instagram. Young people walk to school alone to protect their parents from being abducted. Rather than shaping students into conscientious members of society, we are subjecting them to state-sanctioned trauma. How can we ask young people to trust in a system that meets them with tear gas, pepper balls, and riot gear? For many of us, Operation Midway Blitz has resembled a systematic extralegal campaign to induce fear. Just yesterday, US District Judge Ellis released a 233-page opinion condemning ICE's unprecedented use of force as excessive and establishes the narrative behind their deployments as simply untrue. Additionally, CBS reports that 90%, 97% of individuals detained do not have a criminal record. Far from well-intentioned law enforcement, the operations have been centered on power and profit. Earlier this fall, the Brennan Center for Justice released an analysis explaining how the billions allocated to immigration enforcement will be funded to private corporations running surveillance and custody. Similarly, Amnesty International singed out Chicago as the epicenter for, quote, "an expansion of authoritarian practices intended to stoke racism." In short, what ICE is doing is illegal and immoral. In an effort to guide students, I often turn to history lessons to show where everyday people stood up for their neighbors. From the civil rights movement to independence movements across the globe, we have proved that we are able to change our circumstances for the better by exercising compassion and recognizing our shared human dignity. I encourage this council to follow the model of other jurisdictions that have been named, like Aurora, Cook County, Evanston, Elgin, Wheeling, Wilmette, and make Prospect Heights an ICE-free zone. Our faith in a future where young people thrive requires diligent, proactive works. Thank you.
Next, we have Terry Murphy.
Hello, my name is Terry Murphy, and I am resident of Prospect Heights and a first-generation American citizen. I'm here to say, and I'm here to say what's happening in our country and to our cities, I take personally. As a teen in Poland, my father was picked up off the streets of his town and disappeared by brown shirts in Hitler's reign of terror. Imagine his family not knowing where he was and no way to find out. By the time the Americans liberated his camp, he was so malnourished, a 25-year-old skeleton of a man, that all his teeth had rotted out. ICE and their complete disregard for the rule of law and our constitution are this administration's reign of terror. They are the modern-day brown shirts. They incite chaos, claiming to deport the worst of the worst, but in their sweeps, they target anyone who looks Mexican or Latin American, raiding places of employment, homes, and profiling people at random traffic stops. They turn on peaceful protesters with excessive force. No one feels safe, carrying on in their daily lives with armed militia scoping out the terrain. Subsequent investigations have shown that many American brown citizens are picked up in the raids, because they looked the part, and most immigrants without documentation, almost 70%, are taken into custody and have no criminal record. We are here to say, stop. In many ways, our activism is having an effect, as courts are ruling against this administration in their tearing down of democratic institutions, weaponizing the legal system against those who dare to speak out, and the illegal detainment of residents without due process. I am asking the City of Prospect Heights Council to be on the right side of history, to stand up for their residents who want to have what everyone wants in life, which is life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and the right to due process. I'm asking the City of Prospect Heights, who along with their neighboring communities have substantial immigrant communities, to draft an ordinance that would bar civil immigration enforcement officials like ICE from using village-owned property to conduct their operations. The neighborhood of generational and marginalized immigrant families, some now citizens, are watching. The little girl in me, with the father with rotten teeth, is watching.
That's it? Okay. Item 13, we have no executive session tonight. Item 14, there'll be no action on the executive session we don't have. So, item 15, I look for a motion to adjourn.
Some move. Anderson?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or adjourn. Thank you.